Guys, the next order of business is the Budget Allegiance. Please stand and join us for today. The Budget Allegiance.
All right. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to attention. The council citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor in consideration of others wishing to speak. Please leave your remarks to three minutes. Are there citizen comments? Today, so we're gonna get in and out of that order of business quickly. To room number four, budget items. I'd like to ask our finance director in the order to come up first. We're gonna talk about today. And you could please introduce yourself for the record and remember to speak up loudly and clearly so those listening at home can hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So today's our second budget work session. The topic today is gonna be user rates and fees. So these are all the items that you would approve through resolution. So department directors will be coming up and speaking to you about user rates, fees that they will be bringing to you by rate resolution this June. So our plan is to bring those to council in June prior to setting the budget this year. I wanted to just make note on your packets. You'll have some additional information in your packet. Included in that is the equity buy-ins fee study. Dustin's gonna be talking to you about equity buy-ins, so we put a copy of the study in your packet so that you can have more information on that. You will also have included in there some information on the internal service funds because we won't be speaking about those today, but you'll have some information on how those internal rates are calculated. There's some also information in there about workers' comp because that's an internal service fund as well. And then Tim put together some additional information on his fees that are in there, so related to parks, recreation, cemetery, and golf. There's gonna be several points throughout the presentation today where you'll have an opportunity to ask questions. So in between, like a transition between each department and fee topic, there will be an opportunity to ask questions. And then at the end, we put specific question prompt slides in there so we can go back and revisit the different rates that we've covered today. So if you come up with questions or you just don't understand the purpose of the fee or how it works, we want you to feel free to ask any and all types of questions you may have. If you have any questions about last work session, there's an opportunity at the end to ask any and all related budget questions. Anything that you might wanna see at a future work session. We're looking for as much feedback and information that we can get from you so that we can make certain that we're providing you all the information that you need, want, and that we are giving you all that we can during these work sessions. So I appreciate your time today, and I am going to have Dustin, our Public Works Director, come up and introduce the next topic.
Thank you, Director. Director Johnson.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. So I'm gonna do a real quick overview of kind of what you're gonna see and how you're gonna see it in the order of today's conversation. So as Amy already laid out, the bulk of what I'll be presenting on today is the enterprise funds. And so those who are either watching at home or not familiar, enterprise funds are their own funds. So standalone accounts for water, wastewater, sewer, sanitation, I said storm sewer, storm drains. Those are all enterprise funds separate from property taxes, general funds, any of those other accounts that you may come in contact with. So each of these funds have capital where we have to invest in new facilities like a water treatment plant, operations, replacement of equipment, debt service, which is a new thing for water and wastewater, all of those things. So that is all built into these rates that we'll be talking about today. So that's the front end. So we have a consultant with us today, FCS. So FCS has been with us for a couple of years now, and they've built in our enterprise, or our utility funds. They've advised us over the years as to how to keep the utilities afloat as far as the utility rates. So I went to school to be an engineer and to build facilities and no construction and maybe even a little bit of contract. I did not go to school for utility rates. And the more I get familiar with it, the more I find it's a complicated, unique niche. And so FCS has been here to help us through that. So FCS has been contracted specifically for today, or for today's analysis, just for water and wastewater. So that's the heavy lift that they'll be doing and presenting on soon as I'm done here. After that, I'll pick up and we'll go over sanitation, storm water, equity buy-ins, and then that will be the enterprise funds, at which point I'll roll into service fees. So a lot of stuff to cover, and hopefully we'll roll through it pretty quick, but there are some deep subjects that are complicated and it's not all great news. So with that, I will hand it over to Doug and John, who have done an incredible job getting us prepared for today's meeting on a very quick turnaround. So I'll hand it off to you guys, and thank you.
Thank you very much. I hope you all can hear me okay. While Doug is sharing his screen, as you see there, I'll introduce myself. I'm John Gillard-Duchy with FCS Group, pleased to be working with the city of Lewiston again as I was involved with that study a few years ago. The way that we've laid this out, and as Dustin said, this is sort of a quick checkup. And we'll walk through with the help of Doug Gabbert, who's the project manager on the work and who also did all the analysis. He will lead you through the results. And Doug, if you could get the next slide. Okay, so we'll, I'll spend just a couple of minutes on the purpose of the study and the major elements, and then we'll get right into rate recommendations for the water utility or the water enterprise, talk about the financial plan, the forecast, and then the capital expenditures that are planned on the water side, and then move right into wastewater, talk about those rate recommendations and that financial plan or cash flow forecast and the capital plan for the wastewater utility. So the study purpose, as Dustin said, this is a checkup. There's a sense while the master plans are nearing completion that a more comprehensive study will be needed once those plans are done, but I think also a sense that an immediate course correction might be in order given some of the, I guess, some of the weighting that's been done on capital projects over the last couple of years, foregoing a recent increase for very understandable reasons, but that there may be some catching up to do. So that's the purpose of the current year checkup. We're looking at updating the water and wastewater financial plans with current fund balances, operating budget. We've got existing debt service schedules that we wanna make sure that the rates cover that debt service, planned capital as we know it now, and then some offsetting resources that we're also planning for. And then, once the master plans are done, those updates are done, then in all likelihood, we or someone like us will be back to talk about what adjustments might be needed to incorporate the recommendations into master plans, which could be more capital projects and then certainly a recalculation of the equity buy-in fees. So I mentioned the financial plan. What we call that in the rate industry is the revenue requirement. And the revenue requirement is really the key landmark in any rate study. It's the determination of how much money is needed from rates in order to meet all the different financial obligations of the utility or enterprise. So you see circling that revenue requirement box of the inputs that feed into that revenue requirement or financial plan. Financial policies are at the top. We wanna make sure that there's a prudent amount of money in the bank that reserves are there for capital projects or for emergencies. So those financial policies we build into the analysis. To the best of our ability, we forecast economic assumptions like inflation and growth and build that into the model. We build in the operating budget and changes over time in operating costs to salary and salaries and benefits, maintenance, contractual services. And then on the left side, you see the capital plan and capital funding decisions. That can include funding capital projects for rates with cash or using EBI as equity buy-in fees for capital projects, grants if you could get them, existing reserves, and there's always the possibility of debt, of issuing debt under very strict rules in Idaho. And I'll tell you that the results you're about to see do not include the additional issuance of any debt because we know that's a high hurdle. So those are the inputs that you'll see feeding into our results, and then Doug will walk you through our findings.
So we will jump down to the bottom line and then explain the story behind the bottom line. And we begin with the water utility. And when Dustin said that not all the news is good, I think this might have been what he was referring to. You have in the shaded column the city's current water rates and a list of recommended rates to the right of that. I would encourage you to focus on the percentage across the board increases, which show two years of increasing at 35% per year and then 1% per year thereafter. So from fiscal '24 to fiscal '30, not quite doubling the various water rates. So what you wanna know is, gosh, why does that need to go up 35% twice in order to make things sound? So let's answer that question. What you see here is the cash flow forecast in graphical form, and this is a very helpful graphic once you understand how to interpret it. So you're gonna see another one just like it for wastewater. So let me explain the elements, and we'll dwell a little longer here. Each of the columns represents the cost of the utility. The darkest band at the bottom are the operating expenses, which tend to be very well behaved. Next up is the, gosh, what am I gonna call this? Moov. That's a good color, for the existing debt service. Debt service is an important new thing for the water utility and for the rate consideration. A smaller layer above that is system reinvestment, which is capital that is specifically carved out of the rates. And then beyond that, all of the need for capital beyond the system reinvestment. And you'll, and the, first of all, let me point out the solid line that you see going across all of this, and it actually has a very slight positive slope. It is actually going up, and it's very hard to tell that. This line represents what you can afford at your current rates, assuming a certain modest level of growth. And you'll see that you're currently able to handle your operating expenses and your debt service for a while. System reinvestment gets squeezed out, but there's just not a lot left for capital. And capital really is the story here. Capital really is the story of why these rates need to come up so dramatically, so quickly. So let's talk more specifically about the capital plan. So in the top panel here, you see the capital plan for several years, and one of these bars doesn't look like the other ones, right? So 2026 is the year of the big project, and that is the water intake project. The project itself is gonna be $16 million, but the city doesn't have to foot all of that. And I have, the table at the bottom kind of explains all of that. We've reconciled here everything that is in this column and how much of it needs to come from the city. So the water intake project is certainly the largest project in that year. There are a couple of other ones, which leads to a gross capital expenditure of about $17.7 million, which is where the top of this bar is. However, not all of that has to come from city resources. You have some ARPA and 595 funds to the tune of $7.5 million outside of what was accounted for in your beginning fund balances, which leaves you with a net expenditure of 10 million, about 10.2 million that needs to come from city coffers, from rate money, which is still quite significant. And this is the source of those 2 35% rate increases. And once you get up to where you can afford this, then you're good. You practically coast at rate increases that are below the level of inflation for the foreseeable future. That is the water utility. Wastewater is much less dramatic. There's not really a story here at all, although if you force me to come up with one, I would say that the story is also capital, but let me not get ahead of myself here. What you see in front of you is most of, and I guess from a customer perspective, the most important part of the sewer rate sheet. The shaded part on the left represents your current rates, and I would draw your attention to the percentage increases that we have recommended in each year, starting with 5% per year for three years and then tapering off to 4% per year for the three years beyond that. And it gets milder and milder as time goes on. What you'll notice in all of our rate recommendations is the highest recommended rates come first, and things tend to taper off after that. We don't, we would never leave you at the edge of a cliff where four years from now you need to raise the rates a super high amount and you haven't been doing it before then. We start early and we go as smoothly as we can. So let's look at the same cash flow forecast for wastewater. You'll see it's not nearly as dramatic. The current revenue is plenty for a while to handle operating expenses, existing debt, and rate-funded system reinvestment, but there is capital needed that rate money won't cover at current rates. So as we look at this one, at this graph, if I were to superimpose the water plan, the water capital plan on top of this, what you would notice is that the water plan is much higher. Remember that big tall two-part column in fiscal year '26? It would tower above the sewer bar, but all of the other bars, the sewer bar is higher. So in general, the sewer capital plan is more aggressive or has a higher value, a higher dollar value than the water capital plan, ranging from $6 million a year at the beginning up to $10 million a year toward the end of the forecast period. So that is the reason why some rate increases are needed, because you do have to afford a lot of capital. And that is wastewater. And with that, we would be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Does it look like we have an extra?
So for the major project in 2026, that $10 million, does that have to be, come out of fees?
No. I mean, we have somebody with us today that's taking this project on himself to try and find. So the water intake was, if you're not, to give a little history to those out there, when they built the dams and levees, that obviously the city of Lewiston was significantly impacted. And so they gave, they built a water intake for the plant at a new location on the other side of the river. That location never functioned. It was built in 1972, I think. So they gave us an emergency backup intake while they were trying to fix the new one. So we've been working on the backup for decades, however, 50 years now almost. And so what this project is, to go back to the original site because it's upstream from the mill, to get that water intake put in. And this project, we went in there and did some looking and investigating into the intake, and the concrete was rotten, and so they needed to do multiple revisits on the design, which is why it's taken so long to get today. And the cost has inflated over the years. I think it was budgeted at $6 million when they didn't have the information they needed upfront. So at this point, as they've identified, we have a combination of 595 and ARPA funds. ARPA funds, by the way, need to be spent by 20, the ARPA funds are from the DEQ that we applied for in God. So those are state ARPA funds, but all ARPA funds need to be expended by 2026. So if we kick the can down the road, we lose those ARPA funds. We can, I guarantee you, with all the other issues in water, we can find a place for those ARPA funds, but we would lose that project, we would lose, I don't remember how much we got from ARPA, but we would lose those funds. And so we're currently negotiating with the feds to see if they can step up and fill that gap. It's no success yet, but we're gonna continue that conversation. But your question is timely in that what would be the impact to the rates, ratepayers, if we couldn't get the feds to fulfill the obligation to give us a working intake as they promised in 1972, while right today it's $16 million minus 7.5. My eyes are a little fuzzy, but, no, I mean, we could, as I've said earlier, we can have this conversation about punting these capital projects, which is not advisable, raising rates to an extreme rate, which is also not advisable, but at this point, it's a policy discussion and decision that needs to be made.
So the date's more of a timeline of the ARPA funds?
Well, that, I mean, keyed in at 2026. We still need to get some permitting, but it'll be ready to go out to bid this fall, short of funding.
But it won't be spent, and it needs to be spent in 2026. So we can, we will not get to the spending part with that ARPA money if we were trying to do it for the intake.
For the city's ARPA money, and I'm assuming it's the same with the DEQ, it needs to be obligated by the end of this calendar year and spent by the end of '26.
And at this point, it won't be more than likely.
We're up against the wall, yeah. The plan was to bid it this fall, then it would be obligated, and then spent by '26, and we did program it in the budget of '26, but we're short funding.
So councillors, if you want something to do, you can contact our federal congressional folks in our issues office, Senator Craple's office, and Congressman Fulcher's office, and ask them for help. This morning, I sent a letter to Senator Rich's office asking them to, well, I sent it to the Corps of Engineers, but copied it over to congressional offices, asking them for help. And if you heard the director talk about this, this was a commitment the Corps made to us 50 years ago, and we still don't have a functioning water intake. And I don't see why. It's the responsibility of the residents here, the city of Lewiston, to pay for that when that was part of the whole Lower Snake River project when they put the dams in. And so they've made two attempts, they got it wrong both times, we're trying to fix it, and I believe firmly that it's their responsibility to make good on that. And so I sent a letter to the Corps of Engineers, asking them to include $8.5 million in their 595 funds, which they will not get, they will not have, but this will require a lot of support from our congressional folks to make that happen. So pick up the phone, give them a call, and tell them we need this to happen. It's just that simple.
Can we get a, like a rough copy of the letter kind of you sent to them?
Yeah.
It's on you, conferring to you, I think, if she would, yeah. But, you know, we talked about government, local government, trying to make government work and work for the people and all this kind of stuff, you know? And this is a no-brainer to me. Corps of Engineers have admitted in their email to us that they don't know why it failed the second time, that they're not gonna fix it. That's not a good response. And if that's the way that we're gonna treat our people, you know, then we all ought to just leave, do something else. That's not responsible government, and I just, this is gonna be an uphill battle, but it's just not, should not be up to the ratepayers to pay for this. And so we have to spur our congressional folks and get them to do something to help us on this. This is just as important as everything else they're working on right now in DC for this district. So pick up the phone, call them, and if you have to call DC, this is important for our people here. You're not gonna offend anyone by doing that, councillor Forsman.
What is the risk to the ratepayers? Is it possibly gonna fall apart, and then we, like, what happens?
I mean, no, we've been continuing to, it's like driving around on a spare tire. We've been using the backup. This winter, it silted shut, and so we had to work with the Army Corps to get it dredged and ongoing permitting. There is a liability, we're downstream from Clearwater Paper, and so the whole purpose, you know, they've got their own ponds, and so for whatever reason, if there was a spill, we would shut down our intake, and we rely on that intake. We could, you know, as we did when we did the construction of the water plant, we could, if it happened in the winter, we would be fine because we have wells, but if we had shut down the water plant in the summer, with the surge of demand with irrigation, we would have irrigation restrictions. You know, there would be a lot of maneuvering, but we've been doing that for 50 years. It's just more of a project that we're obligated to spend for the well-being of the citizens who use the water, and, you know, we're in a situation where we just don't have the funds to fix that right now.
Okay. Just a comment, I guess. Yeah, I have your letter, I will do that, and I will get ahold of them. That is unacceptable that, you know, if you're told you're gonna do something and then you don't follow through. I agree, Mr. Mayor. I don't think that the citizens should have to do that. It's unfortunate that these are the responses we're getting, so I will definitely be making contact with some people for bringing that to our attention.
One additional comment, as I think Doug alluded to, two things. One, our goal is always to give you that nice streamline, line trend, you know, and maybe we have a little bit more on the front end, but, you know, nobody wants to see those rates going up and down like that. And unfortunately, we faced some situations recently that we don't have much of a choice. Number two, we've spent most of the time talking about the intake, but we have multiple reservoirs that need relined, we have a transmission line that needs to be replaced, and we have a system with pipeline replacement that needs a significant investment. So we could take, let's just say, we're gonna defer that $16 million. We still have, and it's undefined at this point because the current facility plan is closing out because it was focused on the water treatment plan, but we know looming out there forward, there is a significant amount of investment in the system that's gonna be needed to be addressed in the next decade or more. And so, you know, there's two components. Yes, the $16 million for the intake, but there's also multiple million-dollar transmission line and reservoir investments that'll need to be made. So I don't wanna, next week's conversation will be capital, so I'll lay that out, but I think we need to continue to have this conversation over the summer as we work towards adopting updated water rates. And I'm leaning on this group for direction as far as policy and the tough decisions of how we're going to weigh out the $16 million intake, the double-digit water rate increases, and then, you know, what other pieces are behind that.
Councillor Spicklemeyer?
So I guess, I know you didn't wanna go there, but just kind of an overview, the rates also he had, and they're included, the upgrades that we talked about that we needed for the reservoirs and the timeline of an existing reservoir fix.
Yeah, I mean, talking with Doug, you know, that's, if there is a good news on that, that 35, 2 35% takes care of that $16 million or whatever the remainder of that, and then you will have that built, your capital will be built into that rate moving forward. It's a hard pill to swallow in the next two fiscal years, but that will be built into that. So we should be in a good standing moving forward. I did, I mean, I did, I got the email, I think it was Thursday at 4:00, and my jaw was on the ground, and I asked Doug, I said, "What does it look like if we take that out?" And he took it, you know, he did a quick and dirty analysis and got me the numbers today, and it, you know, it's not 35, but it's still double digits. I think it's 10% moving forward. I think it's ten percent moving forward. And that's still ignoring the sixteen million dollar water intake that needs to be done.
So if we were to be able to find funding for the remainder of fixing the intake, what would rates, rate increases look like to cover all the other projects?
It would probably be the, the rate, the ten percent that Doug sent me this morning. It wasn't in the slide presentation. It would be ten, ten, I think it was ten for three or four years and then down into fours and. Down to fives. Yeah. And that, these numbers will, you know, as, as we said in the beginning, th- these are projections forward off of a facility plan that we're closing out. So in our budget request for '25 is a new update to our master plans for water and wastewater, and that will better educate, more, better define what those projects are and probably a little bit better planning dollars put to those. And so those numbers could go up, could go down, but generally, I, I think that ten, ten, ten and four or five will, will give us the flexibility on that.
Thank you, Director.
All right, thank you, John and Doug. I'm sure we'll be talking.
Thank you. Thanks, take care.
Okay, I promise it won't be that bad moving forward. So moving on, just, just for me, I'll give you the update on sanitation, stormwater, equity buy-ins, and then we'll pause and then move into service fees. So these are not sanitation. Sanitation is a little bit unique compared to the other two that we just talked about. Sanitation is, as far as revenue, just as large as water and wastewater, but the bulk of that is contracted services. So SDI does our hauling, Clearwater Compost does the yard waste, Assotin County takes our landfill waste. And so we pay a lot of money to the contracted services, and the only actual capital we have is really our, our transfer station. And so we have a lot of revenue, a lot of money leaves out paying those payments. So we carry a, a much smaller reserve for capital improvements, but it still plays a role moving forward, and we have operational reserves in there to cover overages. And so FCS did a, a similar update in twenty, it would be July of 2022, in preparation for that year's budget. And so this forecasted out all the way out to 2027. And so that's the slide that's got in front of you now, right now. And what we discovered at the time was, prior to my arrival, I can't remember, it was 2019, maybe 18, the city created a recycling service market adjustment or surcharge for recycling. So every account got the two dollar and ten cent service charge, and that was because of the recycling commodities were so high, it was causing a disruption in, in basically the rates because everything was being subsidized to cover the, the low commodity values. Well, by 2022, we found those rates had kind of gotten back into balance. And so working with FCS, it kind of came up with option A, B, C, and kind of a 1A knockoff there to balance out. And essentially, what we decided was, we need, we could get rid of that surcharge and absorb it into our other rates, spend out our, any reserves that were built up at that point and kind of keep that steady. And then you'll see in, we, we basically adopted option A, so we got rid of the surcharge. And I think we went with a two percent, two percent in '23, we went zero percent last year. And then moving forward, we're, we're generally, what we found, no matter what decision is made, we're still going to be lower than we were in 2022 because we took that service charge out. So as I said, there's minimal capital, but there will be some capital. We did replace the scales last year, so our capital reserves are down slightly. And then we have the, the road into the facility needs to be replaced, which was not on our radar until the last couple of months. We need a backup loader and the floor at the transfer station needs to be replaced. All of those are to be programmed, but generally, I would recommend anywhere from a one to a two percent increase on sanitation rates since we went zero percent last year. And as Doug showed you with the water rates, those compound each year. And so if you take two zeros in a row, that really causes your trend lines to go down. And with everything that's going on as far as, you know, material costs, labor costs, energy costs, all of those things pay into that. And so by going zero, two years in a row, it kind of puts us behind the ball. Next week will be a capital conversation, and so I'll share with you a little bit more detail on the floor. The loader is just a used piece of equipment, but it's still going to be considered capital. But the floor and the hall, or not the hall road, but the road into the facility need to be replaced, and those will, those will have impacts on our, our small capital reserve. But you can see minimal impact one way or the other as far as sanitation rates. The sanitation department, one thing that we learned during COVID is people have thrown a lot of things away, and our revenues have stayed high, which is good. Even though we haven't touched rates, the, the revenues have been high. So trying to kind of balance out that reserves. And with such high revenue coming in, it's, it's, you don't want to go too, too dramatic and carve into your reserves because there's just not as much. Stormwater rates, we only have five months of revenue, and so generally, we have no interest in touching that. You know, the ordinance forty-eight eighty-two went into effect basically last year at this time. Utility, the stormwater utility was adopted last, last summer and then went into effect January one. So not a lot of revenue built up at this point. There's a lot of people applying for credits or exemptions. Rather just get a year of revenue and figure out where those trend lines balance out on the revenue. We have a lot of capital facility, or capital planning, and we're starting to put those into the areas where we can start implementing them, but we, we see no reason to touch that rate at this point. The only thing, there's a few minor adjustments we may make. If you remember, at the, at the public hearing, we, we tweaked a little bit on the rate and some of that, as, as it got tweaked from the DIES, didn't actually fulfill our current circuit breaker percentage. So we're overcharging on the circuit breaker, so we would like to adjust that. There's a few other little tweaks in there that we would make, but the overall rate charged per ERU would not, would not change.
Director, I have to ask you a question on sanitation rates. That new yard waste part, I presume this is what you're looking at, that bottom row there, I presume that is sans, I don't have a sales tax also?
Yes, yeah, so they combined that. Okay, earlier, John and Doug spoke a little bit about equity buy-in fees. And FCS also did the study for the equity buy-ins in 2021. Equity buy-ins are in a way, so as you've seen, capital is based, we base the rates off of capital and operations. And so when somebody's living in Lewiston and they've been here their whole life, we adopt a master plan, and so their rates reflect future investment into the system. So they continue to pay their rates, knowing that at some point, we're going to, we're going to put in a new well, or we're going to make some investments into the water treatment plant. And so they've been paying for these invest, for the investments for however long they've been into the system. Now, somebody builds a new home, and let's just say they come in the day after we open the water, brand-new water treatment plant, and they're saying, great, I don't have to pay for it. That's what these equity buy-in fees do. They adjust that, so anybody buying into the system has a buy-in fee so that they don't get the services that everybody else has paid for, for free. In, in 2021, FCS did the analysis, looked at how the city's been administering it, and at that time, it had just kind of been updated with CPI and wasn't really adjusted as, as our capital needs and capital planning went higher, the equity buy-in fees did not rise to match that. And we actually even had some of the lowest equity buy-in fees in the state. And if you look, I submitted it in your, the old, the study in your packet, the very last slide in there shows where Lewiston was in 2021, at generally forty-four hundred dollars for a house, where, if you can look all the way to other, other cities across the state and where we sat. So the recommendation was to do a five-year phase-in for all of these fees. We're, this would be year four, so we're almost through there. And you can look, look at this and you could really say, whoa, by the time we invest these, we'll be the second highest. And that's not the case because everybody else is going to adjust theirs along the way. So we'll reinvestigate, once we update the master plans, we'll take, just like with all the rates, we'll go back and look at the equity buy-ins and see where we're sitting and see if we need to make any other adjustments. But this has been an adopted plan that we've been playing off of for the last three years, going to four now, to try and, try and keep that equity for all the ratepayers. And so, you know, you'll see the charges and it's a one-time fee. And essentially, if, if, if the people coming into the system are not paying for that fee, it gets absorbed by all the other ratepayers. And so typically, once you explain it to all the ratepayers and saying, oh, it just brings every, the new users into the system and catch them up with those who've already paid into it. Just buzzing through this real quick, so NFY 24 is 2902 and raising it up to 3218 for a single-family home, that's for water. Wastewater's broken into two separate components, so this is for collections. So if you're in LOSD or COSD, you'd pay your, a separate buy-in fee to them when you hook in. So this is only for city collection customers and then the treatment plant. So everybody would pay this one. So no matter where your, where your wastewater is collected, regardless, it ends up at the wastewater treatment plant. And just a quick overview, so from '24, the current fees are at sixty-seven, sixty-four, and go up to seventy-five, forty. And again, these are one-time fees.
Is that just new homes or anybody that moves in?
Anybody who hooks, who hooks, who hit, who hooks into the system. So that is all of the enterprise funds that I have for you today before I close out that. Are there any questions on equity buy-ins, sanitation, storm?
Sanitation, last year, you mentioned that we have a, a cost involved in landfill in Assotin, and they're about to finish up that current landfill?
Hmm, we got a couple more years.
Was that will cost us, correct?
Uh, when, so we're actually in negotiations with Assotin County right now. They, we have a, a ten-year contract. I negotiated with the sanitation manager at the time, that was 2015 or 2016 when we adopted that tenure. Either way, it's going to expire next year or the year after, and so we need to update the tipping fee. In the conversations I've had with Assotin County, they initially thought it would go out to 2060. It sounds like they're going to kind of change some of their plans and pull it back a little bit, so maybe into the 2050s, late 2040s. Their plan is to go to a transfer station. So, you know, our conversation with, with, with Assotin County is, what does that impact for our transfer sta, would we, we have separate operations at that point and go to the same hall, or we do a regionalization? I mean, we're twenty, thirty years out, but planning needs to start happening now. But it's not, it's not reflected in any of the rates today. I mean, it's, Assotin County, you have closure and post-closure for landfills, and so we're paying, that's part of that tipping fee. But any future capital that the city would participate for post-closure is not built in these rates yet, but it will be coming here in the next ten years probably.
Good.
Okay, just a, a real quick service fees. So I, I think everything from here on out, and not just me speaking, but everybody else, are service fees. So services that the city performs for a customer, and then we, we charge them a fee. These, what you're seeing here is a water service fee, so it goes back into the water enterprise funds. But these are not, we generate about a hundred thousand dollars a year on all of our service fees. You can see there, everything from late charges to meter installations, anybody using hydrants for industrial construction use, inspections, anything like that. It's not a lot of revenue compared to our seven million dollars of revenue. And so it's a, it's a service we provide. Most of these rates that are adopted, we did a heavy lift last year evaluating, and I did include them because it's a long list. I'll get you that information when we get to it. But the service fees are built on generally the cost of labor, but mostly the cost of materials that we're providing. We try and cover our costs, but outside of the enterprise funds, so a lot of what we do is a, a public service. And so to try and balance that out and do a true cost of service is not necessarily what we want to do. We have a, we have a city engineer, a city surveyor, and so we provide general public service to those. And a lot of these fees are just, what we, we, we look at what, what's comparable out there with other communities, we look at, a lot of these things are, we do advertisements, so for public hearings and things like that, we have to do that, so we cover those costs. We try and cover our time, printing costs, things like that. But we're not, we're not making any money, we're not trying to overcharge or undercharge, we're trying to find that middle ground. And so in conversations with community development and finance, we've, we've kind of come together and say, this is a policy decision. We would prefer for the council to look at these rates, look at these services, and I tell you, I will tell you upfront, we're losing money on, you know, vacation when somebody comes. We, we're not charging enough because we have to advertise in the Tribune, and their costs have gone up, so we need to up that cost. But that's not this year. Everything that we've got, nothing's really significantly changed. So we can go increase them by COLA, we can go by a CPI, we can go zero, we can go whatever you, you choose. But I'm telling you, everything that we've charged in '24 and even '23 hasn't changed significantly. So I'm, I'm here to just show you generally the fees that we charge, everything from wireless communications and subdivision reviews. But there's, you know, those are the fees we charge. So with that, I'm generally done, unless you have any questions.
Councillor. Looks like we have it for now, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Next up, we have Parks and Recreation, Walton Cemetery, Parks and Recreation Director, Tim Barker. Tim, welcome, please introduce yourself to the record and members, pick up a line clearly so those listening at home can hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Tim Barker, Parks and Rec Director for the city. Looks like we jumped a couple slides ahead. Don't want you to lose all of this great information I've come up with. First slide, just generally speaking, just so you're aware of the different types of fees that we have within our department, there's a number of different areas that we have within Parks and Rec where we do provide service fees. And as noted in that second paragraph, there's a listing of about eighty-two different fees within this proposal, which I will not go line by line for, but instead, I'll highlight each of the pages. And then if you do have some follow-up questions on anything, I'd be happy to answer those, but more just generally speaking and, and giving you an explanation of, of what some of the fee structures actually mean, because some of them may, may, may be a little bit foreign as far as terms are concerned. Just a little bit about the department, we have a number of different areas that we have within recreation parks facilities, so nutrition, urban forestry, aquatics, golf, cemetery. Those are all areas except for facility maintenance where we have various fees that we do charge within our system. The three areas that I'll focus on today will be cemetery, and these are fees that are associated to the purchase of graves or cremation niches, and then opening and closing fees, which I'll get into the explanation of those in a, in a minute here. And then within Parks and Rec, various fees for facility use, and this is for exclusive use, whether it's while a facility's open or when it's closed. And same thing goes within our park system, these are exclusive use type fees that we've, we've created and have modeled our revenue stream off of for those, for the, the costs related to what it is for us to provide it to somebody. And then the golf fees, we'll get into a little bit deeper discussion on that. And these are annual increases that we work with. Courseco, who is our contracted management company up at the golf course, and so they go through and review and. go through and review and independently reach out to varying golf courses in the area and obviously look at what our operating expenses are, and then make recommendations to us annually for the various fees that are charged at the golf course in an effort for us to reduce, or as we hope eventually eliminate the need for, need for general fund support to operate the golf course. So starting with Norma Hill Cemetery, various grave fees, these are fees that we haven't increased within a few years. And before I get too started, too, too far into this, I want to make note to the supplemental page that, pages that were provided to you. I started to create these slides and tried to include as much information as I could on the slides, but instead I wanted to simplify it, but if you want a deeper explanation into that, I also have on the supplemental listed what the comparable average is, and then as well as what Mountain View Funeral Home is. They are factored into the comparable, but wanted to, because they're the other service provider in the community, give you where applicable, those comparable rates, just so you're aware of what they charge there. So these are in general about 3.5% increase across the board. There are some areas where we have increased the general fee for those. One example for mausoleum crypts, you'll see there's two separate rates that are listed there. The first rate is related to the certain row, where those crypts are within the mausoleum. So your higher-priced fees are for your lower rows, and then as you move up, if you want it to be interred with inside, a full body inside of the mausoleum, the higher you go, the less expensive it is, and same thing goes with those niches as well within that facility. And just briefly on the niches, we are looking at and planning to move forward, and you'll hear a little bit more about a capital request for this next year related to whether we look at an ossuary, or whether we look at a columbarium and a scattering garden option. I'll talk a little bit more next week about those as we look at capital projects. And those are all trying to meet the need and demand for cremation options within the cemetery that we are very low as far as our inventory goes right now. So this next page is our opening and closing fees. So that first page is, if you're going to the cemetery and you want to purchase a plot, or if you want to purchase a niche, whether it's pre-need or as needed, if, if a family member or someone that you're helping through the process secure a spot within the cemetery, that's what those first fees are for. So at the time that someone passes, then we look at the opening and closing fee options. And so this is our fees related to interning the body or the cremations within the cemetery. So two different sets of fee structures that we have in place. Just a reference for the second right of internment, the NS that's listed there, that's a non-service-related fee. So if you don't plan to have an onsite service and have Wilbert's, who's our contracted company, provide that service, the SER means that's what it costs, the additional cost with Wilbert's to be onsite to provide that, that burial service for you, which includes set up a tent and everything that, that's related to a service. So, and again, double-depth adult, so what that means is for the first burial and then for the second burial. So those are our plots where you can have two separate caskets on top of each other. And again, related to the grave, or to the fee structure for opening and closing rates, does note there if any, what the average is around the region, and if Mountain View does offer that service, then it's listed there. If there's no cost for Mountain View, then it's something that they don't provide. So that's what I had as far as the cemetery, and I can move forward unless anybody has any questions specific to the cemetery.
Counselor Klein.
So I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. As far as, so you've got the grave fees and the opening and closing fees, so if somebody buys a grave ahead of time, so they'll pay basically double? So like a single-depth adult?
Yeah, so let's just take a simple one.
Yeah.
And if you have a single-depth adult grave, your cost to purchase that location within the cemetery would be $1,263 is what we're proposing. And then, once that family member, whoever it is, passes, then you would contact the cemetery and then we would work on what the internment cost would be. So there's no additional work as far as our contractor who does the digging services. Wilbert's, when you purchase it, that's just strictly with our office. And then beyond that is where all those additional fees come in related to, as noted on the bottom, the monument staking, that's where we go out and mark where the location is, so then the, so then Wilbert's can come and, and plan to prepare to dig that area. But these are all fees that are after, when you're planning the burial, if that makes sense.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
Director Barker, can you just explain your reasoning behind here? 3.5-ish percentage on the grave fees, and then some of these have upwards to 18% increases, and is it following the recommendations in the cemetery plan?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Lidke. Yes, that's following the recommendations, obviously looking at more modern comparable. We went out and probably about six months ago, looked at about eight different cemetery locations locally, and then another six within the region where cities are managing cemeteries, and so that's where we came up with some of the pricing structures. So some of our fees, like the monument staking fee, has not been increased in quite a while, same with the quick claim, there is a processing cost to us and staffing costs related to that, and so that's why some of those fees are above that 3.5%. The 3.5% was selected for those areas where we felt like we were, we were kind of in that, that, that hotspot area where we were right in the middle or towards the higher end of the comparables, and then working with the commission and worked with Dennis Hastings, also with Brower, Malcolm's Brower One, as far as what we're seeing in the industry out there. We want to continue at least looking at what's, we want to continue to have an annual increase to meet that, that CPI.
Paula? Counselor.
Thank you. And then, one of the things I noted when we were reviewing the cemetery plan was that a discussion about non-resident, is that still something that the commission is discussing? Is that something we want to look at to try to offset some of this as we move forward, or is that kind of pushed to the, the, not really wanting to go there aisle?
Thank you for the question. It's one of those that, that we have discussed at the commission level, and it's not something that the commission was interested in at this point. If we were to look at down the road and a management change within the cemetery and maybe creating a district, that might be something that might be more appropriate if you have a cemetery district where there's a certain taxing area that helps support the cemetery, but at this point, we weren't seeing resident versus non-resident rates elsewhere. And so I think the concern at the commission level was that might deter someone from, from having interest if there was two separate rates. It was a recommendation to explore that within the master plan.
Sorry, can I?
Counselor Forrester.
So I see, as Counselor Lidke said, with the increases, are we going to look at less increases, like kind of do a higher bump right now with this, and then the following years, you're expecting maybe a lot lower bumps? Or what does that look like for the following years?
So really, thanks for the question. Really, it kind of depends on what that, that CPI is and what our, what our, what it, what does it cost for us to do business? We'd probably continue to look at a regular increase, but keep it at the lower end. Some of these fees increased more this year because we're playing a little bit of catch-up on some of them.
Right, yeah.
Because we haven't seen an increase for a while. Last year, Wilbert's provided an increase, and, and those came to council as far as what their service fees were, and they hadn't increased their fees in, in at least 10 years to us. So we, we took quite a hit as far as those opening and closing fees last year for them, but I don't foresee that changing in the immediate future. We were far below what they were charging elsewhere. And with the change in management at Wilbert's, it was a good time for them to address it because none of us really could have, had a great answer why things never changed for us. And so really, they were just trying to catch us back up to what the market rate is that they, they chart elsewhere. So moving forward, as far as community center, Fenton Gym rental fees, again, these are just general fees, what I'll talk about, and these, so I will note on the cemetery fees, the commission, as I pointed out, discussed those and at their last meeting did support those rate increases as proposals. Parks and Rec Commission will be meeting soon to go through these fees, as staff has proposed gradual increases here and there. There's a few areas where we're choosing at this time to not create an increase. We do raise these rates every couple of years. There are some fees that we are looking at where you'll see, for example, salmon and steelhead rooms, combining those two. So we're trying to promote, we do have a fair amount of rentals where they try to fit into a smaller area because it's less expensive, so providing a little bit of an incentive for them to book multiple rooms to be able to get them into a better-sized space, and they save a little bit more. But it will, overall, instead of getting 30 to $35 for the room, we'll try to kind of upsell them into a bigger space, eventually, you know, giving us the $50 rate as opposed to the 35. Because we don't often have room rentals that are adjacent to each other because of a lot of times those order walls that we have, the removable walls, you can hear the group next to you pretty well, so normally there's not back-to-back rentals in those facilities. So that's the, the reasoning for those combined rooms, looking at a reduced rate for those. And then we never really had a entire building discounted rate, and we, you know, probably have four to five events throughout the year that do want the entire building, and so that's the purpose for that entire building rate. Projector speakers, that's a new rental. More and more, we're getting requests for that, for use of a portable sound system or projector, and so we're utilizing equipment that we have, let's say for our Movies Under the Stars, we have a projector that's, that's purchased for that program, but then isn't regularly utilized throughout the year, and so now we're going to be offering that as an option for someone if they're having a presentation or want a slideshow.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Lidke.
I have a couple of questions, Director. Well, I think it's great that projectors and speakers are available, do you have some protections in place?
Counselor, you're going to have to speak up a little bit first.
Sorry. Do you have some other things in place like deposit, because if they break it, that's a cost to us that's not covered by $40? Are you writing those agreements to make sure we're protected in that way?
Great question. We do, within their rental agreement, note that if something is damaged and it's noticed, so those are, the projector speakers is for our in-facility rentals, where we have a supervisor onsite at all times. And so in their walkthrough, at the end of their event, if we notice that there is damage, that's different from when they come in and see everything functioning. It is written into our agreement that there's a potential for us to charge an extra fees to, in case there's damage to equipment. So it is noted in there. There's no set rate for that. We do have that for if someone was to come in and utilize a spider box if they had an event, there is deposits for things like that, or deposit for our kitchen, but we don't when we have a staff member onsite.
Paula? Counselor.
Why no increase to Fenton Gym? And can you tell me, will the Boys and Girls Club be taking that all summer long?
Good question. Fenton Gym, we raised last year, I believe, it had been $18 an hour, and so that's why we're not choosing to increase it this year. And last I spoke to Fenton, related to Fenton Gym and the Boys and Girls Club, my understanding is that they plan to utilize the new club this summer and won't be utilizing Fenton except for backup for some of their programs, and would work with our staff on that. But it's my understanding that they won't be holding the challengers program at that facility.
Thank you.
Counselor Forrester.
As the salmon cutthroat and Chinook and kitchen no change, or I'm sorry, minus the kitchen, are those no change because of the ossel rate increase from last year? Is that why we're choosing?
Um, those aren't increased because there's less demand for those, and they don't have as many options within those rooms. Okay, so ballfield rentals, we have a number of different fees within our ballfields and our park structure. We're going to continue to charge $45 an hour for practice time, and then you can see that if they have additional need beyond that, then it would be $20 per hour related to that. Game, for, for someone who's booking a game, and this is typically, what you're looking at is your various high schools from around the region tend to utilize our facilities quite a bit in February, March, and early April because they can't get onto their own or they don't have their own facilities, so that's what the game fee is for, for the prep of that field, and then the use of that during, exclusive use during that timeframe. So that's just a small increase there. One thing that I wanted to note, in the past, we haven't had a separate light fee, that's been built into that game fee or the practice fee. We now have a separate light fee for when those lights are being used. And we did complete a light study a couple months ago to figure out what our true cost per hour to light an entire field was, and it's approximately $15 an hour for that. And so that's, hence for the, the proposed new fee. So it may note, like, if you did a night practice for two hours for $45 and you wanted lights, the cost is going to be increasing because we will be adding on that separate light fee for that use. And then the concession stand, we do have a number of concession stands at our facilities. We have three different concession stands where we have ballfields at, and that wasn't, that's something that we are, we're looking to create that, that charge for this year, but there's no change proposed for that next year.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Lidke.
Director Barker, I'm, I'm not picking on you, but these things have come up here lately, what if they leave the lights on all night?
Great question. The only situation where we would have lights left on would be for our partner agencies like Little League. And so Little League, at the end of their season, are billed for the hours that they are on those fields and the days that they're on those fields. And so they pay that light fee. So let's say, for example, if lights were on at Airport Park on a field and left on overnight, that is on Little League to be able to pay that and reimburse the city for that cost. So we grab those monthly charges and then turn around at the end of the season and bill them for when those lights are on.
Paula? Counselor Lidke.
And that's great, and I think that if they've agreed to do that, but what if they forget? Is there a process for neighboring folks that, can they call non-emergent police to report it so that we can get it turned off because it's, it's a nuisance more than anything?
Yes, great question. That's the process that we have in place right now. It's something that we can look at promoting in different ways because it has happened a couple times. Typically, if, if the police department is out and in the area, they'll notify, they have a call-out list for our department, and so they'll go down that list until they reach somebody that can respond and make sure that those lights are getting turned off. But yeah, police non-emergency would be the correct route to go. Or if they were to call the community center, our Or if they were to call the community center, it would just go towards our voicemail and we would receive an email on it. But can't guarantee in the middle of the night, someone's phone is on either. Okay, park shelter rental fees, again, we just do gradual increases on those. The larger the group size, the more time that we need to spend cleaning up potentially after them. Band shell has separate higher fees because of the various types of uses that you can have there that you can't have at a regular shelter. Most all of our shelters do provide power. We used to not include that, and it was an additional fee, but we would have to keep going in and out to turn that power on. Now, it's just built into that structure. Okay, so miscellaneous fees. An alcohol fee has always been charged for our park rentals and then goes through an approval process through the Parks and Rec Director and the Police Chief. So there's no change to that. The only change we're adding is that that fee is now applicable to our indoor facilities also. So that still has to go through an approval process if someone plans to have alcohol at their event. And again, this is an alcohol use that it's basically bring your own and not a for sale. If someone was to bring in a caterer or to sell alcohol at their event, then we would be working with community development on that permit process. Something that we're adding is our small inflatables. We have inflatables for various events that we run. And so, this is providing, this is an opportunity for those that have already rented our facilities, Fenton Gym or in a park. Typically, we do now provide a staff person as an option if they do want to utilize one of our small inflatables. And so, those are the costs related to that. And then, we have charged various vendor fees for events that we provide because we also provide power options for vendors. But this is streamlining everything so then we don't have various fees for different events. It's a standard, standardized fee. And we do have vendor fees also out there for individuals that have an event that want to have vendors there as well. So, but we're not proposing any changes to those right now. Okay, on to Brighton Canyon. So again, there's a more detailed explanation in the breakdown on the final page of the supplemental that does show you a comparison of 2023, 24, and then the proposed 25. And then, notes the increase proposal between 2024 and 2025, and then the percentage. So it breaks that down a little bit further than what I've shown you today. Again, these are rates that have come to us. We received, I think it was last week or the beginning of this month, from Courseco, their proposed management plan for FY25 that we're currently reviewing. And the fee structure is tied to that. So the fees that are listed here are what's coming from their own review of our operations up there, what some increase in costs are, and then what are the comparables around the region and predominantly in the valley to try to make sure that we continue to stay competitive in the environment. One area for the entire Brighton Canyon Golf Course, one thing I would like counsel to consider or look at is we are looking at an increase in our lease rate from the airport for the land. We have about 135 acres there. Up until through this year, paid over the last 10, 15 years, anywhere between about 27 and $35,000 for that lease rate. Last year, the airport completed a detailed golf course lease appraisal that in turn showed them that they should be charging a rate of about 80 to 85,000. And with inflation, they have, they put into their budget a proposal for lease rate at the golf course of $90,000 for FY25. And so, currently, that approximate $35,000 that's spent on that lease rate comes out of the general fund taxes. It's not coming from the operating expenses or the season pass or the daily users. And so, the question I have to counsel is, do we want to continue to have that lease rate come from the general fund property tax dollars? Or do you want all of it or a portion of it to come from the revenues that are coming off of the golf course? Right now, their fee proposals are only related to what their annual increase would look like, but does not take into account any lease. That's typically not what they add or they normally don't manage within their budget structure, the payment of a lease. So that would be something new that they would do. I've talked to them, they have the capability of doing that, obviously. And in the reporting system, we would just need to know before we come back to you with a, the public hearing for proposed rates, whether you want all of that, some of that included in our proposed rates for FY25. So just so you're aware, we have about 25,000 to 30,000 rounds a year. About half of that are pass holders and then the other half are your daily rates. So we have about 12,000 to 13,000 a year in daily use rates. As opposed to, if you might look at our numbers, you might think, okay, well, you got 30,000 people that are through there throughout the year, they're 30,000 rounds. Well, let's just charge an additional three bucks per round. It breaks down different because some of those, like I said, half of those are your pass holders. So it would be a higher increase to what they're paying now.
Counselor Chloe.
I would like to see what the fees would look like if we included that 90,000, that difference of the lease. Yeah.
Okay. The difference or the total?
To make up for that, make up for that 90,000 that we're gonna have to pay instead of what we're currently paying.
So 55,000 difference is what you're asking?
Ultimately, I'd like to see the golf course as self-sufficient as possible, so.
Then, we're trying to work to get there. Absolutely. One other thing that we've requested of Courseco this year, we wanted to get a few years, a couple of years under our belt before we talked about a revenue share. And so, they have proposed a revenue share for us this year. Essentially, their proposal is very common, they said, at the rest of their other city-run courses, where they would look at the previous year's revenue and then the next year's revenue. And 15% of what that increase in that revenue would go back to them. And so, for example, that might be if you have a $20,000 increase, then it might mean 3,000 back to them in addition to what we pay for their monthly fees now to create that incentive towards them. So that is something that we're considering moving forward with to try to... Right now, they're essentially covering their administrative costs and then the management of the financial side of things for us.
Counselor Forssman.
So, what, kind of a weird numbering here on the young adults versus senior? So you have, if I'm reading this correctly...
Are you looking at season or?
Yeah, the season passes. So is that an adult pays 1,001.30 and then the senior pays 1,055? And then, anyone under 39 is 685?
Correct.
Almost seems like, typically, I feel like you see seniors that get more of a discount. It seems like that should be swapped.
Yeah, and again, this is a recommendation from Courseco, from what they've seen. Typically, and you'll see in the junior rates, obviously, they're much lower, or the college students, you're trying to build up long lifetime golfers. And so, you tend to have the lower rates at the younger ages as you're trying to get them locked in. The young adult, to me, over the past 10, 15 years, has gotten older. It used to be 30 to 35, now it's up to 39. But it's trying to get golf introduced at that younger age for them to continue on is the reason for that pricing structure. But the difference is fairly common in other courses that we've seen. But it's that much different.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I won't go through these necessarily, just a explanation. The corporate passes, we have two options and we don't have a lot of businesses that take advantage of these. But the 300 individual, what that means is a company for the fiscal year can purchase the 300 individual pass. So that gives them 300 entries to play. And so, they could be used multiple per day or one per day or not at all. They still pay the same rate. The daily pass with dates, what that means is that, let's say, City of Lewiston purchases a daily pass with dates, corporate pass for $3,000, you only get one pass to be able to use per day. So if someone comes in and wants to use that pass, the first person in is the only one that gets to use it. The next person can't, it has to be for a different day, if that makes sense. These are passes that have been in place for quite a while.
Can I go back to the airport lease that you were talking about earlier? So it was 55,000 originally?
About 35,000 is what we pay now.
35,000, I thought you said 55.
The difference is 55.
I see, gotcha. Okay, so originally, it was 35 and it came out of?
The general fund taxes.
So we paid that?
Mm-hmm. It was built into the general fund budget.
And?
And it's kind of stayed that way. So previously, the previous management leased the golf course prior to us taking it over and having Courseco manage it for us. And that was basically part of what was paid previously. That total rate included the cost of the lease at that time. So let's say, we used to charge 115,000 a year to the operator of the golf course. He would pay that amount, which we had various fees that we had to pay off and the lease was one of those.
So that was actually paid for by the?
By the leaseholder, but we also never received any of the revenue before either. Or nor had the expenses of the equipment and everything else onsite.
Kind of a jump to 90,000.
It is, yeah.
No justification for that?
A couple hundred pages worth.
I see.
Yeah. Yeah, last time we looked at an increase like this at the airport, it was by the airport for one of our fields. We were looking at Airport Park in Hathaway at the time that we no longer manage. And as part of the airport property, they had about a four-year increment where they wanted to drastically raise the fees. And I came back at them with a lease appraisal that showed that this is what the true cost was. And so, they followed that lease appraisal until now. And that was probably 10 years ago. But they had a specific company they worked with that works with golf courses to create this structure.
So the new operators of the golf course, are they paying any of the 90,000?
No, the city's technically the operator. We just have a company that is onsite managing it. We can muddy this more if you want. So really, everything else is pretty straightforward. I just wanted to give an explanation. If you don't know what a Finn scooter is, we have four of those. And it's essentially a small electric motorcycle that holds your golf bag. So those were four scooters that we inherited as part of taking back the management of the golf course.
Counselor, if there's no last questions, we're going to move on to EMS fees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have our deputy chief of police with us here today. Welcome, chief. If I can get you to speak up loudly and introduce yourself and speak up loudly and clearly for those listening at home. Welcome.
Sure, council members, Mr. Mayor. I'm Richie Lucas, Coast Guard Fire Department Deputy Fire Chief, filling in for Chief Wright Meyer. He's out of town on vacation. So, and today, I'm going to propose MSAB's ambulance fee increase. The Emergency Medical Services Advisory Board recently met and they are proposing the increase, the last one occurred October of 2022. And this just ensures that we're competitive, they compare benchmark studies, and also compare us to local area agencies and what they charge. Just briefly, approximately 10% of general fund revenues come from the fire department. And our primary source of revenue is through EMS. That's the majority of what we do, also our fire contracts. I'll try not to move too fast. There's not a lot here. So just a quick slide on patient impact and citizen impact. Really, Medicare, Medicaid aren't, those patients aren't going to see a noticeable impact. The private insurance, based on the percentage of the increase of the amount, will affect, based on their deductible, it may affect their copay and things like that once they get their bill. But that's the effect of how it will affect our patients in the long run. This slide, and I'll just do some explanation here of what it really, really means. So we have basic life support calls, advanced life support calls, and treat no transport calls. So it means we go to someone's home, we treat them, we leave. Usually, those are diabetics, they go there, they have an issue. We give them blood glucose, we check their blood sugar, and then they wake up, they sign, and we leave. In each stack, each bar stack, there's a light blue, a dark blue, and a red. The light blue is what we currently charge for our rates. The middle blue is what we're proposing. And the red bar is an average of the area agencies. So we just, we took and we looked at all the rates for area agencies and then we...
Bless you.
And then, we basically, we hit the median. We took the average and that's what we're proposing to charge as an increase. You'll see, the fourth stack of bars is the mileage. Same there, it's light blue, dark blue, and then red. And so, we just, currently, we charge 1202, we're proposing 16 dollars a mile. And then, the average for the area agencies is 1619. The fifth column is, we're currently charging 3895 for oxygen delivery. We weren't, we discovered that we had a review of our third-party bill recently. This was after the MSAB board met and that we found out that we can collect on oxygen. We can charge for that. Prior to that MSAB, prior to that review, we were under the impression that we couldn't collect for oxygen anymore. It wasn't a chargeable fee. So that's why I proposed zero. So that's something maybe we can address at a later date. But yeah, I didn't know if this slide itself would raise any questions. But basically, there's a base fee for the service and then a fee for mileage. So if someone gets service here, downtown corridor, gets transported to one of the two area hospitals, the fee is different than if they're outside the city. Say they're in Kendrick or somewhere like that and we have to travel further.
Counselor Bigmeyer.
Thank you. So, not to use the term wrong, but this isn't really a cost of living fee impact to somebody. So why don't we go to the norm?
Why don't we go to what's?
To the average.
To the average? We're proposing the average of the area agencies as well. So the area agencies are, that we based it on, were Soden County and just similar services, Canyon County, Clarkson, Kootenay EMS, McCall Fire, Pocatello, Pullman. We took all those and we averaged them, and then we took the median of that average. And that's what we're proposing the charge.
Okay, I guess I didn't understand what area agencies meant. The red, that's...
Yeah, sorry.
Hundred dollars more.
Yeah, it's a little bit confusing. And so, for ours, like our, say, our basic life support calls, some places separate it. We don't do that, Lewiston doesn't do this. We don't separate it between resident and non-resident. So sometimes, there's even additional fees if you're a non-resident and you get injured or hurt and have to be treated. We don't separate those. We just, there's one fee for basic life support calls, one fee for transport basic life support calls, one fee for advanced life support transport calls, and one fee for when we treat and don't transport. So that's clear as mud. See, if I understand, it's a little bit... So that's clear as mud, see, if I understand, it's a little bit, a little bit confusing.
Got it, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Counselor Clark? Are we just taking, so I think I was understanding where Picklemyer's coming from, why we're not taking the average, we're doing the median. Is that just because of the huge price increase to jump to that average?
Yes, I would assume. That's what we, that's, yes, ma'am. And it's, that keeps us competitive without blowing our price out of the water, I would say, you know? I mean, I think it's fair, be my opinion of it. So, because, you know, some of the prices are, it'd be a huge change, a huge jump. So, but I mean, for the quality of service we provide and the area we cover and the terrain we cover, I think these are fair increases that they're recommending. And, yeah, and just also with the price of all the goods we currently, you know, we use and soft goods and all the things that, the market value of all the medical supplies, and everything else that goes along with the fuel, tires, water, car engines. So I think this is a fair, fair recommendation by MSAB, so.
Counselor Letke?
Thank you. Chief, can you tell me, are these always that you're providing medical care, or are these rights also that a hospital or nursing home calls and says, we need a patient transported?
So the BLS calls are the most common calls we go on. They're the highest percentage of calls, and those inter-facility transports is what we call them. They, a lot of them are classified as basic life support calls. We're not really doing life stuff, but we're transporting non-ambulatory patients to and from facilities. That's, that's the majority of those, from nursing homes, you know, to dialysis, back to and from. Yeah, out of all the, I can't shoot you the exact numbers, but basic life support calls are the highest calls. And a lot of those, and those are bulk of them. I mean, that's a lot of them.
So my question is that the patient gets billed or does the facility? Because a lot of times, especially from the hospital, the patient doesn't make that choice, and so then we're not getting paid every time, right? There's denial. So are we, is there a way that we can actually build a facility because they do have other options than taking your time?
Yeah. It's, you know, a lot of that depends on, and I understand what you're saying, because a lot of that depends on, you know, what the facility has to offer. You know, a lot of times when a lot of these transports happen, it's at night, you know? So their vans typically stop at five. You know, and I don't know, I have our billing specialist here, Amy Paris, so she may be able to answer that question a little better than I can, but that, that is what I, as far as collecting from the facility, I really can't answer that.
I can answer the list.
There you go, perfect. I'll promise that.
Hey, my name is Amy Paris. I'm the ambulance billing specialist. As far as the inter-facility transports go, what we do is we try to bill the patient's insurance first. So some of those facilities, those transports are covered by the patient's insurance. A lot of them are not. More recently, I'm gonna tell you, they're not, they're not something that insurance is paying for. So what we try to do is, we try to build the facility. Sometimes the facilities around town will pay for those, sometimes they won't, and then unfortunately, in that case, the patient does get the bill. We are, and hopefully, in more further months here, we can also do some contracts with some of the facilities in town. We are looking to see if that's a possibility, so maybe we can get some funds recouped that way, but it's just a process that we haven't started yet.
Yeah, we just had one proposed, it was the other day, at the Coalition of Care for a contract, which I think would be a way to recoup some of that money, some of those costs that, you know? Unfortunately, the patients sometimes have to have to foot, or we just don't, or we don't collect, which is an issue, so.
Counselor Porstman?
I'll be quick. You guys, I know you have certain insurance, I don't remember the one. Medicare does pay, but the one that, if you charge too much, they're not gonna pay the rest, and they won't bill the patient either.
Medicare, Medicaid, they all have contractual adjustments that we're required to write off. So no matter what we charge, if we increase our BLS to $655 and we bill a patient with Medicare, we're only going to get $455. It does not matter that we charge $655 and that we raised it. We are a contractual obligation to write a portion off. So then what happens then is Medicare will pay their portion, they'll pay 80%, then 20% will be either put to the patient or their secondary insurance. So Medicaid, we get $165 per call, period. Doesn't matter that we charge $655. We have to write off the rest. So with those insurances, we have contractual obligations. With private insurances, they'll pay the full balance. So that's where we'll see a little bit of an increase in our revenue is with our private insurances.
Thanks, Amy.
Chief, the question, Chief, I'm gonna be following up because I got a question, I just need to understand it better.
Yes, sir.
I need time to think about it.
Sure.
Honestly.
Are we bringing this back? Is this coming back, right, subject?
A GIP.
Yeah, the next subject, yeah. Four or more questions that we can ask.
Yeah. These two are waiting.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy, too.
Yes.
Counselors, we move to room number five, budget discussion directions. Just in case you need for counselors to ask questions, have discussions, and provide direction to staff related to the fiscal year budget. So if there's any items, last minute comments you'd like to share with staff now, and that would be the time, and if you don't have them right now, I would highly encourage you to mail those and get those to, if you didn't get them to me, then I'll get them to staff. Every day, this week, next week.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Letke?
I just have one to follow up on the last presentation, and I would like to see the numbers of the money that we don't receive in comparison to the amount of rides we've given, so that we can look at our loss.
So you wanna see the contractual of?
Well, no, I wanna see how much we didn't get paid for at all. I'm assuming that there's, went to collections, there's people, when you've been denied, how much money we've provided a service that didn't get paid for. I'd like to see those numbers.
Okay.
If you have anything, you send out to one counselor, we'd send it to all the counselors and myself, please.
Thank you.
Okay, room number six unfinished, new business, city council comments.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't hear any, I don't hear this. Today, if there's no further comments, then I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor?
adjourn.
Fuck that again.
If there were by Counselor Short, I'd like Counselor Porstman to adjourn, and those who favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, counselors.